Hello, hello, everybody. Welcome to a special Sunday afternoon session where I'm coming back on to finish up donations. My free readings for my YouTube channel members and all free readings, I know. So Sunday special where I do come back on to make sure everyone hears from spirit. So thank you for your patience and getting to these readings. You'll notice there is no chat. It's because I'm not taking any new requests. This is a makeup session to finish up everything from this morning. That I did not get to. I'll be back on Friday. For free readings at 6:00 PM out in time. I'm on Friday and Saturday nights and Saturday and Sunday morning afternoon. For free readings also. During the week for my YouTube channel members, we have an all member session for a couple hours or more on Wednesday nights. For I have two levels Zen Cricket at 2.99 a month, Praying Mantis at 7.99 a month. My Praying Mantis members get a special session on Thursday for a couple hours or so. And then Friday and Saturday and Sunday afternoons. An hour or so after my other sessions too. You also get advanced access to all the videos that I put out. I'm usually recording when I'm not sick. Two, three, four weeks in advance. So if you're interested, there's a link down in the description box to sign up for that. Also, I offer personal readings. Of all kinds, there's another link down in the description box for that. If you're interested in diving even deeper than these sessions. Yeah, I think that's everything. So we'll dive in. I'll start off with my. Donations first and maybe dive deeper into those. Then I'll do my YouTube channel members. I have a couple of free readings for those. And then we'll start on the free readings for everyone else. When I'm done, I will post and pin a comment. Listing the order in which all the readings were completed. So you can find your reading much more quickly as well. Alright. So let's dive in. Up first, we have Camel. Thank you so much for your patience and getting to your reading here. I know you were up next and we ran out of time, so I'm so sorry, but. We'll jump in here. So thank you for your donation, first of all. And you wanted to know 2025 compared to what 2024 was? So let's see here. What's kind of the overall picture for 2024? That they want to kind of go little summary and then how does 2025? How's that going to compare for you based on current energies? Also, don't forget to check out your 2025 forecast for each individual zodiac sign. I do dive in to different areas of our lives in those two. So you can get some more information for those two. You can look at your sun sign. If you want to know. Know about emotion and love, you can check your Venus sign, your moon sign, etc. So you can get a big picture of those two. Alright. So let's take a look see, look see, look see poo and just see what they're wanting you know what's great. You know, you always get these great abundance cards. So you do have a great possibilities with the 10 of gifts. The 10 of pentacles of a full abundant 2025. 2024 for you. Yeah, it was a year of transformation, transition for you, right? Seeing things from different perspectives, really facing with the devil card here, a lot of the. Ways of thinking and challenges of life of. You know, all these thoughts and beliefs that you had growing up and it challenged like these lifelong held belief systems that you had. So really a very transformative year with those two cards together. And you have the four of candles, the four of ones. There was joy, there was celebration. And so there was stuff to be grateful for and kind of being, you know, I know you had a family gatherings. Which is looks like Thanksgiving. So family gathering type of of energies too. So. It was quite a challenging year, but. There's a lot of things that you could really be joyful for too, right? So we like those and then let's see what they are talking about here for 2025. So you do have the moon card. So very much a. I know yay, more phases, more, you know, the moon phases are really. Being shown to me in my head, just you know, how sometimes I have like all the phases of the moon. It's like a rainbow, but it has from. New moon all the way to a full moon and the waning and waxing and of all that. And that's what they're showing me in my head. So there is a lot of transformation and change and. Movement. I do feel like for 2025, they're encouraging you to track the moon and the moon cycles. So new moon and full moon are huge ones, right? But eclipses are important lunar and solar. And the moon does go into a different sign every two to three days. So being aware of what the moon energy is, is going to help you understand your emotions. And understand why you might feel like you're schizophrenic sometimes, right? Where? Cause we go, we have fire moon, which is passion and. Heat, right? And then we go into earth and feel grounded. And then we go into our head and our thinking and then we go into our emotions. Then we go back, but each, cause we, you know, go through all 12 signs, each of them bring a different type of. Flavor of that fire and that earth and all that. And so being aware of it allows you to be aware of the energy and be aware of why people. Might be acting the way they are, but also why you're feeling how you're feeling. I feel like it's an important thing for you to get your emotions. Balanced in 2025. And that you have great abilities to do so. You can find a lot of free stuff online. I don't even know where have my book. Oh, it's probably in that pile right there. But there's like, you can have books that talk about. It's like little calendars that have all the different phases of the planets, the moons and all that. But you can track it online to. Even do a little moon journal and find out, okay, so the moons and Pisces today. That understands why I'm pulled to the ethereal and to the mystic and why I'm. You know, being pulled into dreaming and about life and, and you know, and dreaming a lot too. So I feel like that's an important thing for you for 2025 because you have a great opportunity for emotional balance. You have the seven of gifts, seven of pentacles. Seven of pentacle shows me that, you know, it's the last thing that grows on the fruit tree is the fruit, but. You know, last year was a big transformational year and really trying to understand what you want in life. Seven of pentacles says this, this year. Kind of sensing in the first four months, you really are seeing fruit of things that you've done in your life and, and you're realizing. Some of this doesn't fit me anymore. You've changed, you've evolved, you've transformed. So some of the things that you desired and wanted and implanted before just doesn't fit your life anymore. So I do feel like there's a movement away from, you know, you're gifting and giving things away. Dreams, thoughts, beliefs, people, relationships, you're kind of moving away from some stuff that just doesn't fit you anymore. So it's, it's positive for you. And the 10 of swords, this is the leaving behind old ways of thinking and moving into. A brand new start, a lot of clarity around life. And you know, we talked about the devil card in that it's, it challenges, you know, you to. Let go of some long-held beliefs with this 10 of swords is so is that that continues this year. That you are ready to let go of some old mindsets about. You know, we talk about that, right? Supposed to be's and should be's and need to be's and have to be's and must be's. Those are the dream killers, the life. You know, essence sucker outers where we just feel like, because we're focusing on so much of what isn't unfolding. That we forget to be grateful for everything that is. And as we let these expectations go and let these beliefs go. Then we can focus more and being grateful for all this stuff. And then as we're being more grateful. For the things that we do love in our life, we get more of that. Instead of focus on our energy and what we don't like or what's missing and we get more missiness, more wanting, more emptiness. So gratitude I feel is a big thing for you this year. Yeah. And also the 10 of ones. These 10s are endings and beginnings, which are are good energies this year because you are evaluating where you're investing all of your energy. And the 10 of ones can be where everything feels like it's important and urgent and we felt overwhelmed. And because we're taught, right? Everything is important and urgent, but it's a year of discovering what's truly. Urgent, what's truly important to you. So that you can prioritize. So the things that are truly important and urgent are the first bucket. That's where you invest your energy first and time, right? The, the second bucket are things that are truly important to you, but not urgent. So there are things you can plan out. Spread out across your calendar. Doesn't all have to be done today, right? It can be. This, this month, that next month, that next month, etc. And then the third bucket are the things that are. Saying they're urgent, 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 but they're not important to you. So they can be in that third bucket where you don't even have to ever do anything with it. They'll take care of itself or it won't get done, but they're not important. So that's okay that they're not, but. It's about evaluating where you're investing your energy and. But the. Finding out what's truly important to you does require you to let go of what you've been told is truly important. Cause you're like, I know everyone is saying it's supposed to be, but it's not to me and it doesn't have to be. That's your life. Even have the list, which I like how they call this the list. It's the naughty and nice list, but it's the judgment card. XX double endings, double new beginnings. Here's that 10, 10, 10 energy. Of you get to decide what's on the important list and what's not. And so you get to adjust this, this year. So it feels here, you know, you had the 10 of pentacles, you know, too. So on the bottom of the decks, you got all these 10s. Of all these possibilities, but it does, it is a year of purging. Thoughts, emotions, energies, physical things out of your life. Because it is a continuing to be a transformational year, transitional year for you. But it feels positive with that 10 of pentacles at the bottom, because your life feels full. But I feel like there's a lot of reevaluation going on. So how is that different than last year? Last year feels very volatile change, a lot of stuff. Exploding on the outside world. This year feels like a lot of internal. Of you choosing to purge. So hopefully that makes sense. That's what they have for you right now, camel. So. It's exciting. I feel like it's a good year for you. So just buckle up. Alright, so many blessings. Thank you again for your donation. And we'll continue going down the listers. We have Anita Abdul. You're up next. Thank you for your patience and getting to your reading. And for the donation. So you want to know the current feeling and emotion of Wagner? And future action. Alright, so let's take a look here. What's their current feeling emotion of Wagner? Interesting energy. By that, I mean, you know, like, don't just leave it at that, right? Is that? Quirky, quirky. Quirky, but funny, but, but. Yeah, just quirky is a good word. So, okay, and then his future action. Sorry, I got all those emotions. But here is based on current energy with the future actions are showing if he stays on the trajectory that they're on now. Alright, so feelings. Queen, queen of swords. Balance of head and heart that comes in there. So open-minded, open to communication. I feel like pretty balanced energy there. So we like that. Although with that, I do feel maybe they're air sign or have an air moon, but it's a. Their mind keeps their heart in a cage or on a leash, like one of those little. Child harnesses. No, 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 no. Cause their heart tended just to leap and leap and leap and. Cause a lot of trouble in their life. And so they've kind of. Learned, no, 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 you don't know, you just don't get free reign because. You ate all the cookies last time, you know, so no, the cookies get kept away and we keep an eye on you. So their mind keeps a very strict, always keeps an eye on their heart. Get the king of good cheer, which is interesting. So we got the king of cups. And we've got the queen of swords. And these are divine counterparts that you normally wouldn't think so. Cause the queen, of course, helps roll over air and thought the swords. But behind the scenes, she has cups and emotion. Well, the king of cups has emotion. Front, but behind the scenes, all kings get a second portion of swords. So. People might look at this combo and go, what do you guys have in common? You're like opposites, but it would be like someone who. Is very intellectual, but keeps emotion and only shows emotion to people that earn it. And then the other person is someone's emotional that only shows their intellectual and deep side to people that they feel can click with. And so you can have great conversations and great emotions. So I feel like this energy. They feel, because we're asking about their feelings, they feel like you guys would make a good, that there's compatibility there. So that's there. We have the two of canes, the two of swords. This tells me again, their heart and their head are always battling. Their heart wants to move and has this energy towards you, but the mind is going woo, 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 woo. Don't rush, simmer down, settle down, right? That mind, I know. You have the queen of gifts, the queen of pentacles. And so they do see you here as someone. Full of nurturing, full of, of birthing. You, you look like you'd be a good mom. No. You would, but they're. They're looking at, you know, this side of that divine feminine, the nurturing, the sensuality. You just have this beautiful goddess divine feminine energy that just moves around you. It's very nurturing. And it's very attractive to them too. And then you have the crampus, the devil card, Capricorn Saturn energy. This is what's holding back. This is that mind. Maybe they are a Capricorn, you know, air sign, Capricorn, Virgo. Are not air signs, they're earth signs, but they're worked by mercury, which is very mental. And as far as they think a lot, analyze a lot along with air signs. So those are like the five. Kind of energies that have this thinking about all these roles and the supposed to be's, the should be's, the need to be's. They have their. Long-held beliefs around things and that is what keeps them. Currently moving slow and, and jumping into anything. Which brings us to future actions. We do have the empress. Here's the matching of the queen of pentacles. This is mother nature, mother nurture, creation. Creativity. Sensuality. So I do see them seeing you as this empress, the ruler of all the queens. So very, very bright here. What's this other one here? Yeah, 10 of pentacles. 10 of pentacles is about fullness of the outside world. It is my relationship, one of my relationship cards that spirit gives me. So I do feel like they see you as like, you're the real deal. You are abundance, you are fullness. You. And I do feel like that's their intention and their action is like to move toward, you know. Seeing what they, you guys can create together. So either that or you're gonna get pregnant. No, I'm just kidding. Breathe Anita, breathe. Oh wait, that's Lamaze. Don't do that. Breathe. No, so I'm totally kidding about that. Well, if not, be careful. You, if, if, if you don't want children. Definitely be very, very careful. You got both of the birthing mother cards. So. But I do feel like they do see you as someone like that. So hopefully that helps. But that's what they have for you right now, Anita. So many blessings to you. Thank you again for your donation. Alright, and then we have Ashvin Ray. So Ashvin. Thank you for your donation. I also noticed you had a free question and so I'm gonna put them together. I'm gonna do your donation first. And then the free reading right after it. So you don't have to search for it, just ease of use. Okay? So thank you for your donation. First of all, you'd like a guidance for you, personal and professional. Alright. Let me take a sip of my peppermint tea. So good, so good. Okay. So let's take a look here. First of all, guidance on your personal friend and your question was, your free question was about someone. That someone still thinks of you. And so we'll ask that separate. So on the personal front, what's? Guidance that here and that here and that one there. And I feel like these four are for your professional front. Okay, and let's just pull a quick card or two for if Simran still thinks of you. Cause now we want to know. So that, we'll answer your free question first because that'll take us into this first. First. I mean, the donation reading. We got the death card, which is endings and beginnings and the king of swords, king of canes, which. Is all about thinking, thinking, thinking. They're a big thinker, but. What I'm feeling from this is I don't feel like. I feel like they've, in their mind, they've ended things and they're moving forward in their life. But this king tells me that. When they think of you, they're not going, I wonder how you're doing. I wonder, they're thinking about when this happened. And what did I learn through this and, and memories popping up, but it's not. It's all about them and their growth and their movement forward and what's next in their life and not repeating things that they didn't. Feel good about happening. Towards them or them towards others, towards you. And, and so they're looking at. Analyzing more than thinking, oh, I wonder what's going on with you. It's more analyzation, if that makes sense. Big in their head person. Like we just were talking about Capricorn, Virgo energy or air sign, you know, Aquarius, Libra, Gemini. They just in their head a lot. So I wouldn't invest a whole lot of energy in them. And worrying about them. I just feel like they're very consumed about their own journey. And you need, not you need, you deserve someone who, you know, feels this way. So. Just know that you don't need validation about your worth from them. You can find that here, not with me, but in within yourself. You can find that here. Actually, no one can validate us except for our own selves. So that's, that's really not true. Alright. So, so that's what's going on with that one. Okay. So your free reading was really first. Now your guidance for your personal life here. Let's see what we got going on here. Alrighty, okay. Yeah, cause you, you do have a beautiful future personally coming up here. And. You, so you don't need this other person, because you have the page of candles. Which is the page of ones. It's new, new passion entering your life upgrade. Coming into your life, like I was saying, what you deserve, you deserve to be with someone like yourself. And, and I like that because you do have the queen of swords, which is one of my. Cards that represents like a very compatible individual. Cause they balances, she rolls over swords with the king, but behind the scenes, she has cups too. She, she balances her head in her heart. And it's one of the cards that spirit shows me of. A compatible person that's just fits like a glove. Someone like you that knows the importance of. Communication and respect and wanting to hear what's going on with each other. And being there for one another. So, you know, I like that for you. And you do, you have the 10 of gifts, the 10 of pentacles, which is my relationship. And abundance card. So all of this, you know, with the page of candles, the queen, you know, these three cards so far is all about the. You know, finding someone who's next level and more. Compatible, like I said, just with you. You also with that have the 10 of candles, 10 of candles, 10 of ones. By itself can be stress or burden or can be victory and abundance. And with all these other cards, this is about abundance. It's also about being aware of where you're investing your energy on a personal level. And the 10 of ones can be like, become aware of. The, you know, energy you're investing in emotion, in a mental thoughts, emotional thoughts, your energy, your physical actions and just go, where are you investing all that energy? Trying to get validation from the outside world, black hole. Waste of your energy, you know, trying to find your worth in the outside world, unstable, temporary. No, it's, it's all about turning inward. And this is a big year of turning inward and upward. And finding the validation, finding out who you are. You know, when we're looking for apologies or sorries from people. It's, you know, that's giving away our power that's attaching our worth and our validation to someone else. When I'm like, I don't need anyone's apology, you know, if I feel like someone did something. That made me question my worth, that's my work, not. Anything to do with them. They were a beautiful mirror and a trigger to show you what you wanted to see about yourself. So you can release that. So you can forgive them, put down that weight, put down that bag of crap. You don't need it anymore. You're like, you know what? That was, this is yours. I'm giving that back to you. I'm giving me what I deserve and I'm finding this in here. And I feel like that this on a personal level, it's really investing your energy instead of outwardly. It's all about inwardly because. Looking for our self-love, our self-worth, all of our external relationships and world are reflective of that. So when this changes, then that all changes and my relationships with people change. So the greatest gift we can give ourselves and the best use of our energy is focusing on raising our love vibration, raising all that up. So that's personal level, professional level. That all works for that too. But yeah, it looks like you are on a professional level going through a transformation as well. Because you've got the hanged man, which is like a caterpillar transforming into a butterfly. And you have the three of pentacles, which is about the work, but it's about creating something that's unique to you. And. Being true to your authentic self, doing something that honors you and your gifts. And what you're able to give. And I, I do feel like you have the ace of swords, ace of canes here. Which brings in clarity around what that is, around what is this career, this job, this professional? What is more fitting to the true you, who you want to be in this life? Not who you've. Were told you were supposed to be, but who you think you could be. And the six of swords here, the six of canes. It's about getting in that car. It's usually a boat, which is movement. One, leaving behind old ways of thinking, moving into new ways of thinking, but that transitions out into the outside world. Where I feel like it's a time for movement, movement, transformation, leaving a company, leaving a job, leaving a type of career. And discovering what it is, all this clarity about who you want to be, what you want to do, what makes your heart sing? How do you uniquely want to share these gifts that you have with the world? And it's time for that. And so I do feel like it's going to be some, some change and some transformation that happens this year. It's like you're raising your self-worth, you're raising your self-respect, you're raising your self-love and it just flows into the outside world. And allows you to change that too. So that's what's coming in for you, Ashvin. So many blessings. Thank you again for your donation. Alright, then up next we've got Nova, hey supernova. Let me just move some things up here. Got to organize. Okay, there we go. So thank you for your multiple donations today. And this is your number five. You'd like any other messages from Kurt? Actually do have. The Yule oracle out here. So let's take a look here and see. What message from Kurt? He always loves the stories, always loves the oracle and the stories. Sometimes he goes tarot, but for the most part, he's a. Sometimes he goes tarot, but for the most part, he's a storyteller. That's why he was a singer, you know? He likes telling story through song. Alright. Um, I had put these cards back in. So you remember Mother Mary from yesterday. He wants you to remember that one. I had a feeling I was gonna pull one of the cards cuz I put all the cards back in to the deck. Uh, so remember yesterday, the Mother Mary where I was crying. It was powerful, powerful message. So, so take that and look, and then you had the self-care message that came out yesterday too. So remember that from yesterday, remember the merriment that also came out for you yesterday. So he's like, remember all these messages. They're all building and they all combining together. I have anyone else putting them back in, I'm like, I'm putting these back in, these cards are gonna come up, but I wasn't planning on pulling Oracle in this session, but of course Kurt overrides. I listen, I listen to the spirit guides. They're like, hmm, just this one more. I don't know, did you get, I don't think you got ornaments. I don't think you got ornaments. It's card twenty-five cuz it says, so it is a remembrance of what once was. And with what will be, a fragile beauty beaming, beaming upon thy. So let's see what that uh, means coming in here. He always, especially these cards, these are such, um, expressive cards, right? Reflection, memories and intent. For some ornaments are more than yearly decorations. They represent traditions, shared memories. And the hope of passing them along to future generations. These fragile little orbs and shapes that uh, may only come out once a year. But when they do, they provide small moments of joy to remember. Focus in on that, creating small moments of joy to remember, reflect on and have hope for the future. That's really standing out because I feel like he's saying that if you, if you were gonna put what your dream is to give to others, it's like you're giving them ornaments of music, ornaments of emotion. To help provide small moments of joy to people for them to remember, for them to reflect on, and that helps create hope for their future. Wow, so create those songs for you. And that is what they become for others too. Take a step back and review your Christmas tree of success. Ornaments guide you to think and reflect on your current situation. Is this something you want to continue to put your efforts into? Is this something you wish to see in your life next year or in five years or ten years? Are you making choices that align with where you imagine yourself to be? Right? And that's so important, you know, when we're facing challenges and things in our life, is this who I wanna be in ten years? Well, I need to stop it now. I need to alter it now, or it's still gonna be there ten years from now. It's not gonna just take care of itself. It's time for action, right? Like ornaments, you have to move things the way, uh, move things this way and that until everything falls into place. If your situation feels like something you'd like to keep around for years to come, then keep doing what you're doing and trust in the process. If not, it may be time to make some different choices. There we go, boom, boom, boom. So that's what they have for you Nova. I like that. Many blessings. Thank you again for all those multiple donations. You're just generous. Okay, so hang in there, my dear. Much love to you. And then Nellie, uh, you will be up next. Let me just move these last ones down here. I'll leave those up there. Okay, so you also had a free reading I saw amongst all the chat when I was dissecting it, so I'm gonna do your um, donation reading and then I'll throw in the free reading right after, so just for the ease of finding it, um, so we don't have to go looking for it. Alright, so here we go. So thank you for your donation and you wanna general reading on your social and dating life in twenty twenty-five. Alright, so look at that first. Do they want you to know about your social? Your dating life? Okay, and then you wanna know, will you meet like-minded friends and go out more, et cetera? I just wanted to do that one as a separate one. Okay, I'll give that one. Alright. Uh, so will you? Yeah, ten of good cheer, ten of cups, a lot, a lot of joy and celebration. So you definitely, I feel like you will meet like-minded people and, and uh, be doing a lot, you know, literally going out. This is outside, I know, but going, getting out and about, uh, definitely represented there, uh, so I like that. Also on your social life here. Yeah, you know, you've got the two of gifts, the two of pentacles. Which represents multiple opportunities of doing things in the outside world. I feel like there's two specific places that you meet a lot of people and this eight of swords is about leaving behind the thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that made you feel blinded and bound and trapped and restricted in the past. And when I'm looking at this two gifts, the two different avenues in your life. Um, I just feel like, I wouldn't necessarily call them hobbies, but interests that like there's two interests that you really zero in on and go do those things because it's in those places you meet people. Like, let's say, I'm just off the top of my head. Like I wanna learn to cook, I'm, I'm gonna take some classes on, on cuisine. Well, you meet people that that's their love and passion too. And in class and everything, you develop these connections and then they're like, huh, hey, let's have a dinner party. Oh my god, yeah. Let's like switch off every, you know, we'll do your house one weekend, you house the next weekend. So it's like every weekend, you guys have like a Sunday night dinner, and one person, you know, hosts, but everyone helps cook. And it's like, or someone brings a dish, you know, but everyone does it. It's all about that common interest. That's the kind of thing, but it's like two different things and I feel like that's what helps with your social is two interests that draw you out. And then dating life, let's take a look here. Alright. I do feel here, you've got the justice card, which is balancing mindsets out. Uh, I feel like these groups and meeting people are important first because I feel like like the first half of the year, this is where you're meeting groups and social and, and doing that. So it's, it's almost like you're group dating, but you're not getting like romantically involved. It's not that kind of group. But it's, you're getting to know people, you're getting to know yourself, you're letting go of old mindsets, old ways of thinking. Fears, like that aid of swords, releasing these old mindsets that just don't serve you anymore. Limiting thoughts and beliefs and you're, you're making this adjustment. And, you know, in doing that, you know, you, you have the lightning tree here. Which is the tower card. But this is, you're removing things out of your life to make space for dating, for getting to know someone, but I like this that you're finding these groups of people and friends, which you know, friend, these are the type of friends that will be around, like most of them for the rest of your life. And they will always be a constant in your life and you guys also support one another. So when they're like, so you're glowing, did you meet someone? And you're like, maybe? And they're like, so, sit down. We're gonna cook and you're gonna tell us all about it. And then you're like, blah, 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 blah. And they're like, okay. We, we, so far we approve, you know, they're that kind of friends, right? And they're like, so, just something to think about, you know, this is how they'll approach it and they'll be like, you know, how normally you give yourself up for the other person. How are you gonna make sure you don't do that this time? And you're like, oh god, you guys shut up. But you're like, okay, and it's support. And that's what I'm trying to say is that they create your it's like a support group that allows you to maintain yourself and, and you're finding that love. You have love already with these friends. And yeah, you want deeper, more intimate love with someone, but this is your core, this is your foundation and I like that. And it does, I mean, you have page of good cheer, page of cups, which is a new, more, a different type of love than you've ever experienced before. And you have the chariot card, you're really in your power when it comes to dating too. You get to choose. And that's why I feel like the first half of the year, you're realizing that I get to choose the story and the meaning I put around anyone's actions, anyone's non-actions, anyone's words or silence. And so there's this big empowerment that I get to um, choose the story, the emotions, my energy, my actions. And it's like the first half of the year, I feel like you're just empowering yourself. Then you get to experiment with what you've learned in the last six months. I do feel like there's dating. They don't wanna go into people and things cuz I feel like in the beginning, it's more of not seriously pursuing, but more of going, I'm just gonna date some people without trying to get serious. Because I just want to test my resolve. That's, I never use that word, test my resolve in that. I can stay me without getting drawn out. And then that's when the, the final test arrives, which is a love, so. That's what they want you to know right now, Nellie, regarding that, so. Any blessings? And then your free reading. Excuse me. You wanna know, will you and your sister's family exchange your Christmas gifts soon? General on that, please. Was this the firestarter? Let's take a look here. Will you and your sister's family exchange your gifts soon? And a general on that. Okay, well. You have the five of gifts, the five of pentacles, which is it's the feeling of lack of, of being left behind, of being abandoned. So I would say that's a not soon. I, I just feel like there's she's gotta get over her buttherness and her disappointment, right? You do have the moon card that comes out here, so. I, I just feel like I mean, you've been reaching out and she hasn't been responding. So you might, um, cuz you can send a, a group text. You might send a text to her and her husband, right, your brother-in-law. Excuse me, and just say, um, not that you wanna exchange gifts, right? You can just say, if it would be okay, um, I would, I would like to drop by your guys' gifts cuz I, um, you know, I just, uh, want your because you have, they have nephews, right? I just, I just want my nephews to at least get their gifts and like get to get you guys yours too. Don't talk about exchange, don't talk about that, just put it out there where you can just drop by and drop them off and not stay while they open them or anything like that. Release all that expectation, but just allow yourself to get, you know, let that be that if that resonates for you. And then see what happens, okay? So that's what they have for you, Nellie. So many blessings to you. Alright, just a couple more donations. And then things will go a little faster, so hang in there, everybody. These, we go deeper diver into the donations. The other ones will be one to two cards, so we'll, we'll do those. Alright, and then up next, we've got Ton, uh, I'm sorry, Tan Yaka McKnight. Whoops, I'm gonna correct something here, I think, uh, it autocorrected here on my little list, so spell your name correctly here. So Tan, Tan Yaka, if I'm saying that right, McKnight. So thank you again for your donation and your patience in getting to your reading as well. So let's shuffle these up and take a sip of this peppermint tea. So good, I love peppermint. Alrighty. So you are a Cancer talking to a Pisces. That's a lot of water. At least you guys can swim in the water and you guys know you won't drown each other in your emotion. But you wanna know how, uh, they feel about you at this time. Um, he's still distant in his head, among other things, and you're thinking of just walking away, okay? So maybe they have an air moon, even though they're a water sign. But let's take a look here. So, uh, how do they feel about you at this time? And then this one, and then just any advice on is walking away the thing for you. Okay. So their emotions, how do they feel about you? Well, you know, we got the sun card here. This is victory, brightness. They see you as a bright light and their inner child really is prominent here. You know, you're, you have cancer, mother, Luna, energy, so that nourisher, that your, their inner child is crazy about you. Cuz they see you as a source of, of, of that nurture, right? They have the nine of gifts, the nine of pentacles. They are very much a hermit energy and that makes sense, you know? Both of you are water, right? So both are very used to a lot of emotion, but Pisces, I have a stallium and a bunch of other water in my chart, in, uh, in Pisces. And even though I'm an Aquarius sun, Capricorn rising, got all this Pisces moon and all the you know, Pisces, 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 Pisces. So I get it, I get that. I'm a huge hermit because it, uh, water energy impacts Pisces different than it does the, the ruler of emotion, right? You're the ruler. Pisces is more, it starts off like a nightmare, you know, when we're younger as, with Pisces energy. Because you're feeling everything and you haven't been taught anything about it. And so you're experiencing it's like when Superman first got his super hearing, all the noise and everything's overwhelming. That's the kind of energy I feel that they, they get and it's difficult for them to do that. And I feel like that's why they mute. They have to mute their emotions to be able to do it and that's where that distant feeling comes in. Got the ace of cups, so there is higher love, but there's also this, the ace of cups is about our self-love. And Pisces can come across as bipolar. Because Pisces, there's two sides of the Pisces pond. Often you'll see it, a white fish and a, a dark fish, right? Um, they love diving deep and swimming in the dark side of the pond and their emotions. And when they do that, they distance themselves. They pull back from everyone and they do that. And then there's times where they wanna be in the warm sunny side of the, the pond. And that's, you know, what you bring that sunlight that warms that, but that doesn't mean they always want to be in that, that area. I know this probably all makes you wanna go, I'm walking away. But, um, what I was gonna say about the ace of cups is because they tend to go to the dark side of the pond to dive deep into that more, um, shadowy, darker quieter side of the pond. Cuz they need to do that to handle all this loud, you know, emotion noise. They can tend to have a low self-worth and low self-esteem, low self-love in the beginning. And until we actively transform that, any of us humans that have that, we can't give more love than Any of us humans that have that, we can't give more love than we have for ourselves, nor receive more love. Than we have for ourselves and. And I, I feel like they have some of that work to, to work on there. This, the sun. Even though it's warm and it's drawing, it's also like a vampire, you know? Too much sun, I gotta, gotta go into my darkness, right? So in order for you to have a relationship with them, you would have to be okay with. That being normal. I know, right? Let's see what else we have here. You know, you have the ace of candles, the ace of wands. So ace of wands, a new passion. New love interest. So I feel like they're encouraging you going, I think you pretty much already made up your mind. I think I'm ready to walk away, and you're like, yeah, you know. And, and there's this great, um. This great quote, let's see, do I have it over here somewhere? Yeah, here it is. I read it in a, a book and I took a blurb from it, it's from. How to be love, how to be loved by Humble the Poet, if you're interested. It's a great book. But he talked about. Getting in tune with our authentic self, and one of the things he mentions is that, replacing the question, do they like me? With do they align with who I am? Right? And in doing that, um, that allows us to. Really go, yeah, it's not whether they like me or not, it's like, do you align with my energy? And I feel like that just answers your question, right? You're like, no, they don't. And um, so with this ace of candles, this is you choosing for you. It is a new passion that's coming uh, available out there. Uh, for you, you even have the magician, which is you taking action. Um, and the five of swords, which, there's that inner conflict that. The Pisces has between their head and their heart, and you're like, you know? Being confident in your love, your loveliness, your lovability. Your ability to give and receive love. When you. Look at someone and, and, and people get to know you, and they can't make up their mind. Whether you're awesome or not, that tells you everything you need to know. You're stupid. Talking to them. If, if you can't see what a wonderful. I'm a no-brainer decision, you know, and that's confidence, not arrogance, not, I'm better than everyone else in the world, that's arrogance, confidence is. I'm a good catch. You know, I'm a no-brainer decision. If I'm in your path and I'm an option for you. If you're smart, you'd take it, but if you're, but if they don't have that energetic match for you. You can't be that for them, because if they're lower vibration, cuz they've got low self-worth, low self-love. They can't match your vibration, they have to work to get up to that. And transform and raise their love, then they could be an energetic match, but now. They can't, it's like two magnets, right? It's repelling. It's like, they can't go near you because they're, they need to flip to be attracted. Uh, so hopefully that makes sense, so. But I like that, I do feel like there's someone, an energetic match that's out there for you. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Ten Yaka, so many blessings to you, enjoy your adventure. So just a couple more, here we got Arya, you're my last of my donations. And um. So um. We'll, we'll do your two here and then we'll uh, for everyone else, then we'll move on. I have two. YouTube channel member free readings, and then I'll go on the uh, for everyone else's readings, okay? Alright. Well, you have the three of, before even reading your. Your cards here, you have the three of, yes, the three of pentacles, being true to your authentic self, that's just a little. Bonus uh, before we jump in here. So, thank you for your dual donations here. Uh, your first question was, you're feeling better today, I'm so happy, I'm so glad. Uh, and you're trying to move forward, you're applying for jobs in your field. And outside, will you get anything fast? You really need it. I like this being true to your authentic self, so that fits right into. I'm, I'm looking for. What's my path? What do I wanna do, where I wanna go? And I like that. So let's take a look. So as regarding jobs, will you get anything quickly? Here's the job front quickly. And is there anything you can do, or any advice around that, okay? Like the bottom of the deck, you got the six of swords, which is leaving behind old ways of thinking. Um, moving into new ways of thinking, and it's movement, it's action, it's flow, activity. So I like that, that does tell me that there is uh, movement with that, so that's good. Again, three of this, I put it back in the deck, it came out of here again for you. Yeah, be true to you and true your authentic self, you know? You, you really want it fast, but don't rush it. Don't, cuz that's fight or flight, fear energy, right? I gotta, I need, I need. Right? That's anxious, that's anxiety, it's like, no, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna change my energy with this, right? I'm like. Taking a big deep breath and going, alright, creator, you know, um. I would like a job and I would like to do something I love and that. Shows me my gifts and shows my skills, and I'm grateful that you're bringing that to me. And show me where to look, um, bring me any information I need. And have it be that, like, I'm not trying to escape from somewhere, I'm going on an adventure of my life now. Right? There's a difference in that energy, do you feel like one is? An- anxiety-filled and, and, ah, you know? I gotta get out of here, it's fleeing, it's fight or flight, it's flight, instead of, you know what? We kinda look at life and go, this is an, an opportunity for me. Even though this isn't working out um, anymore, it served its purpose in my life. And now that stage is ending, that book is ended, and I'm, I'm beginning a new book. About the life of me, what do I want? Look at it with that, and that is gonna bring things in faster. Fear for all energy is slow, it slows things down. Higher vibration speeds things up, and that's the joy, the celebration, the, you know what? Yeah, this is for me, um, so I like that. Yeah, and you have the, the two of good cheer, the two of, of um. Two of cups, which is about emotional choice, and that's what they're saying here, they're reinforcing that. I can choose lower vibration, which is gonna take me in lower vibration experiences. Or I can choose unconditional love and joy and laughter and gratitude, and. That's gonna bring me in stuff that matches that energy. So be aware of the, the attitude behind it. Is gonna make all the difference in the world, in speed, but also in success, right? And you've got the world, yeah, it's the ending of a major cycle, beginning of new adventures, so you definitely. Have this new adventure that's starting, and, and again, these cards are just reinforcing what I was saying, uh, those so far, I got three more. Because it is, it's old cycle is ending, I'm beginning a new adventure, the world is my oyster. I'm open to possibilities, anything is open for me, cuz I'm gonna be able to leave this behind. I've learned, I'm gonna learn and grow, I'm, I'm gonna reflect and go, what did I wanna learn about myself? So all of that was for me, and even if I can't see it now, I'm, I'm gonna find out. Why I wanted to experience that, cuz it's helping me grow, it's releasing me, it's bringing me my freedom. To truly be my true authentic self, so where am I going, right? Brightness. So what else we have here? Yeah, you have to hear find your higher self, calling you to see things from a higher perspective, right? Letting go of the fears, the, all the fears tied to small t-truth. And go, I know everyone has their ideas of how life is supposed to be, should be, need to be, have to be, must be, blah, 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 blah. Rules, 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 opinions, 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 but what do you want? This is your time to really take a moment, take a breath and go. What do I want in my life? Not what I'm running from again, you know, no. What am I wanting to move toward? What do I want, right? I like this. Yeah, ten of candles, letting the energy go, ten of wands is like creating a buckets, you know? Everything feels like everything's urgent and everything's important right now. But that's a lie, and it's important for you along with this here, with these two cards, and this one, I don't, I don't know what this one is yet, but. These cards coming out together, it's. I get to decide what's truly urgent and truly important in my life. And what's truly important to me, what's urgent to me is bucket one. Bucket two are the things that are truly important to me, but not urgent, they're things I can spread across my calendar. You know, spread them out, spread out that energy. And then there's the things that seem urgent but are not important to you, bucket three. Chuck it in the bucket, you don't even need to worry about those, those things will take care of themselves, or if they don't, it doesn't matter, it's not truly important to you. So this is really determining and defining, defining that for you, right? Yep, and you have the knight of gifts, this is, you're on this quest of. Of seeing your worth and relationship to the outside world in a different way, this is your quest, enjoy the journey, enjoy the adventure again. But um, it also is about take your time, there's no need to rush, the. The rush feeling is from fear, I gotta get out of here, I gotta get out of here, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, it's like, no. You, you, you know, um, you're not alone, spirit has your back. Creator is aware of who you are, they're aware of what you need. You've always had everything you've needed in your life up to this point, not because of humans. Because of creator, they've always make sure we have what we need, or be dead right now, so you can trust creator has your back. Yep, one of your spirit guides. It, it's a funny masculine type energy and it kinda feels like um. Like, I got you boo, you know, they're really cool, I got you boo, you're gonna be fine, everything's gonna be fine, just. Change your energy, I'm not running from anything, I'm moving toward my life. And I feel like that will make a big difference. Alright, so that is what they have for that one for you, so thank you for that. And then for your second one, you wanna know what is Rob's biggest fear and concern right now regarding you? Don't, you better sleep with one eye open, mister. Well, we'll, we'll pull cards. Um, then, does he have bad intentions towards you? Is he talking bad about you to everyone? You know? We'll, we'll talk about some of this stuff, because it's, it's our normal human. Side to, to be concerned about. You know, talking that other people are talking bad about us to other people. And, and it's, it's, it was an important thing, I mean, we've all been there, and, and we're, we've been there a lot in our lives, and. Until we really sit and, and sit in that, I guess that's where we're starting, they're having me jump here without cards first. When we're looking at other people, especially like an ex, right? I'm like, oh, I bet they're around telling all our friends and other people and their family and everything that I'm the bad guy, you know? About that's what they're telling them. And. One, I, you look at it and go, well, there's nothing I can do about that. I mean, cuz I go, I'm gonna look stupid if I go around trying to. No, 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 he, he, him, him, they, they, they did it, not me. Because the people that love me, that truly love me, aren't gonna listen to their BS anyway. Right? The people that listen to them, knowing both of us, and they're gonna believe them. Then you're showing me that you don't deserve to be in my circle. So thank you for showing me what I needed to know about you, and if people just believe that, and if they gossip and whatever. One of the big things you realize is that. People's convers- uh, everyone's words, including our own, out of our own mouth, is all about us. I mean, you can see it, you know, have you ever, like, I'm sure you've had friends where they're like. Oh my god, so-and-so is late all the time, I can't believe it, blah, 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 and in your mind, you're going. You don't see the, that you're late all the time too, and here you're judging them. But then I, you know, when, when I started realizing things like that, I realized, oh wait, there's three fingers pointing back at me. How am I late? Or how am I pointing my finger at other people and it's really about me? So we start bringing back our energy, not worrying about what other people think, everyone's gonna have their opinions. I had someone in my life once where it was a big aha because it was like a work thing, I think, and, and. And I followed the guidelines, I followed everything exactly as I was told to do it. And they were like, you did it wrong, and I'm like, well, no, it says right here, no, you did it wrong. I'm like, well, no, I mean. What do you s- read when you see this? I don't care about your excuses or whatever. I feel you did it wrong, and there's nothing you can do to change my mind, and I'm like. What? And in that moment, I realized. It's not my job to change people's minds, or to convince them about who I am or not. Because the world does not see the world as it is, we see the world as we are. That's why you can have a hundred people see the same event that happened. And they're gonna have a hundred opinions about, different opinions about what it was, what happened, the details are gonna be off. And you're like, wow, when you realize that, you, your energy changes from being concerned about the outside and. My reputation, my validation of what other people think of me, I'm like, I have no control over that. I'm returning here, there's a great meme that goes around, other people's opinion of me is none of my business. Cuz it really is not me, I'm a mirror. If, if a monkey's looking at me, they're gonna see a monkey, if a lion is looking at me, they're gonna see a lion. If an elephant looks at me, they're gonna see an elephant, I can't control what people see when they look into me as a mirror. So my energy focus is what do I see when I look into other people? That's gonna tell me about me and how I perceive myself, right? So, you know, is he talking about, bad about you to everyone? Not to everyone, is it bad? No. It's more so that because he is. In a lower sense of self-esteem, right? Cuz mature, emotionally mature, confident people don't talk like that about other people. So only little children talk like that, right? And that means when, when a human is talking like that, that means they're their inner child. They reverted to a, their little two-year-old self and their pet hissing cat. Uh, and they're just gonna hiss and attack, or hiss and run away, or hiss and attack and then run away. That's when people say things and do things, like we talked about with the last conversation you had with him and his, his mom, right? They were hissing cats, so it's like, oh, those are little children. I don't need to take, they're out of their minds, when, when we, when we feel unsafe and out of control. We ignite or uh, not ignite, but um, reject. Our intelligent, compassionate, loving part of our brain out. And then that's why we revert to going into fight or flight mode, and we're that little two-year-old. Doing any stupid, unloving, uncondi- uh, um, uncompassionate thing. We feel we have to do to feel safe and in control again. And what's something that we do, I get a point at, go, look how bad everyone else is because. We're trying to show everyone else, don't look at me, look at bad, look at bad, look at bad, look everywhere else, naughty, 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 naughty. Cuz we don't want them to look at us and go, oh, you're being naughty, no, 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 look over there, don't look at me, you know? And so that's what they're doing, and if you look at it, you know, oh, he's talking bad about you, and you can be like. He's uh, you know, trying to point somewhere else so someone doesn't see that they, you know, have a dirty diaper, you know? It's like that's the little child in them. So fees, he is talking, but it's too. Show, I mean, to, one, to get a, attention, poor me, poor me, poor me. Making up whatever they need to do to feel that way, right? Or to detract from themselves, right? Um, so let's take a look here, let's, let's go in reverse order, does he have bad intentions toward you? His intentions are toward himself and his, his actions are reflective of his self-love, right? Which is very low. Um, so the intentions. Aren't toward you. His intentions, a- again, going back to that little child, are whatever they feel they have to do to feel safe. Cuz they feel unsafe and out of control, some reason, their inner child is freaking out, that's why they're making all these stupid, unloving. Uncompassionate decisions, right? Yeah. So they've got here, and we already knew this about the king of pentacles, you know, the king of gifts here. He's all about, I need. To have all this stuff and all this fullness in the outside world in order for me to be lovable and acceptable and successful. And I need, I need to have control over all this, and if I have to kind of have control over this, you can't. And that's where that five of wands, the drama, the flame, the conflicting energy is coming in, right? And we knew that, that, that's his biggest thing is that I need everything cuz. When we feel, when we're in that fight or flight mode. That's when we hoard, that's when I'm in survival mode, right? I need to live and survive, give me away, I need all the food, I don't care if I have everything, I need it all, I need enough, you know, and that's that kind of. Energy that is existing right now, it's not towards you, it's self-preservation. Think about someone who's drowning, right? And you, you go out to, you swim out there to rescue them cuz they're. As you get closer to them, you get hit upside your head. Uh, cuz they're panicking. And when they notice you, that they just hit you, they're, and they see you as a life preserver, they jump, they grab onto you and they pull you under the water. They're not trying to hurt you, they're not trying to murder you. They're just in panic mode and they're doing whatever they feel they have to do to survive. It's not, I know it's hard to hear that it's not personal, cuz you're like, it feels, sure, seems like it, it feels like it. But when people are in that panic mode. It's like when someone yells fire in a theater, people who would normally be very gracious and helpful and everything. Are stepping over and trampling each other and killing each other to get out. Because we go into an animal mode, right, the hissing cat. So he doesn't have bad intentions towards you. In fact, what's happening in your life is happening for you. And that, you know, we kinda went, talked about a little bit yesterday, a little bit earlier too, right? We have agreements before we come down here for certain things to happen at certain times and. If, if this doesn't happen to you now, you won't be free to be your true authentic self. You will continue try to be and change and out of fear, alter and shrink and walk on eggshells and. I'll do whatever it takes to be around you, I want you to wear a collar and crawl around like a dog and you're gonna have to eat on the floor. How bad does it have to get, right, before we're willing to go? No, I'm going to respect me, I'm going to be true to the authentic me and I've gotta be me. And if I can't be me with you, then I need to be me somewhere else, right? And that's what they're doing, they're releasing you from the cage so that you can be free. And when you look at that, it's actually no. It looks like this human has bad intentions towards you, but the real intentions behind the scenes is for you, right? And then what's his biggest fear and concern regarding you right now? Got the chariot, the choice, the choice, the choice, the two of wands, you got all this choice. That his biggest fear is that. He can't just. Force you to do what he wants. His biggest fear is that you have free will, you have power to choose for you. That's his biggest fear, you get to choose the story, you get to choose how it impacts you, you get to choose your next steps. You get to choose whether you agree to a divorce with, you're left with nothing. Or that you want half, right, that was his big, his big thing. But it's all the choice that you hold the power. And that's amazing to see, wait a minute, I don't have to do anything I don't wanna do. And it's like, wow. And that's his biggest fear because that little inner child, I need to be in control and I'm not in control because you have choice. And I can't force you and I can try to convince you that I can force you, but I can't, right? So hopefully that helps a little bit there, Aria, I love that for you. Very empowering time in your life and I know it. It's a very, uh, can be a very scary time in your life if you want it to be. Um, but just always remember that this is your life and you're writing, you're writing your new story. You, so. Thank you again for your donations, I really appreciate those. Alright, so thank you guys, so that is it for the donations, so um, next up here, let me just check something out quick here, alright? Pretty good, we'll move that down here, so. Uh, next, and now the free readings start now. I'm gonna, I have two for my YouTube channel members that get first priority, so they'll be up first. And then I'll start on the other list of the non-monthly channel members. And these are one to two cards, so these will go uh, much faster. Alright, so up first, we have happy pill. And then after that, we'll have faith in love, so happy pill, like a general reading, alright, let's see here, what does spirit want you to know, right? What does spirit want you to know, alright, here are the two cards, wow. So. You have the chariot here, victory, movement, power of choice. And the four of swords, the four of canes, it's, that's mental stability, it is restfulness. But there's also this um. Letting go of expectations, letting go of supposed to be, should be, need to be, that's what brings us peace of mind. When we have this long list of how everything is supposed to be and should be and need to be and must be and blah, 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 blah. Then uh, we invest a lot of energy and stress and unrest. And worrying about all that stuff, right? But when the power of choice comes down. Uh, you know, every moment is a mental choice, an emotional choice, a energetic choice, a physical action choice, right? And um, it's either higher vibration, joy, gratitude, unconditional love, peace. Laughter or fear, right? Expectations, supposed to be, should be, need to be, have to be, uh. And so I feel like they're saying here that whatever you encounter, whatever you're wanting guidance and advice on. It's that you get to choose, you get to determine. The meaning that around whatever's happening, the emotion you want to feel. The energy you wanna invest and the choices you make for the outside world in regard to it. Yeah, we're given a lot of. Opinion around what the right thing to do or the wrong thing is, but there is no right or wrong, it's. Different choices with different experiences, different outcomes. But none of it's right or wrong, it's what's right for you in this moment, what do you want? Taking a step back, taking a deep breath, going, alright, let me get rid of all the noise of supposed to be. All the noise of opinion, what is it that my heart wants, close your eyes, open your heart, what do I want? And then your answers will come, you'll. Realize when we're not so concerned about what everyone else is thinking or whatever else is going on out there. We get to live our life instead of living these lives that we've been given that, you know, we think we're supposed to live, right, blah, blah, blah. So hopefully that helps, the power of choice is in your hands. No one can, you can't choose for anyone else, you can only choose for you. And that's empowering, so freeing that you don't have to rule the universe, just you. Alright, so that's what's coming in happy pills, so many blessings to you. And then faith in love, you are up, and I'm so sorry, I did go to look and I'm like, I must have zoned out, um. And I didn't, um, and uh, cuz I saw you had a lot of great comments and support through there and I think it all just blended in. And I didn't see your question, so I did not answer it and I'm so sorry. So I'll answer it now, which is, will you be a mom this year? So let's take a look. So apologies, apologies. Alright, so. Will you give birth? In twenty twenty-five, right, will you become a mom, will you become pregnant or give birth in twenty twenty-five? Okay, and will you be a mom is another question, it's really cuz you can be a mom to others too. I feel like here first, um, you've got the shadow card, you've got, um, it's Saturn. Capricorn is the devil card energy, this has to do with. Change of mindset. I feel like there's letting go of some. A lot of rules, a lot of pressure, a lot of fear around. Needing to be a mom, what it is a mom, some old maybe mom. Pain from, with your mom or motherly energy in your life. I feel like that happens first here, um, and so they're saying that. That's the energy that's keeping you from becoming pregnant is there's some, just some beliefs, some, and it's all stories and meaning that are up here. Thoughts and, and beliefs that can be changed and transformed, it's the shaking of the cage. And it's for you, so you can find freedom, you can find release, which opens things up, right? You do have here asking about, will you be a mom to others, not of your own here, you have the eight of, of candles. The eight of wands, which is a lot of movement, a lot of energy, a lot of um. Just a lot of energy and, and uh. Activity regarding being a mom for others. And. So I feel like while you're working on releasing some of the shadow work around motherhood and. Uh, interactions with maternal energy from when you were younger. Even, could even be some, if you've done any. Na- prenatal um, shadow work. Cuz we, we, when we're in the womb at some point, our soul enters in. And we start experiencing life in the womb. Um, not to get into pro-life and all that kinda stuff, it's just a fact of spirit that at some point. We really start experiencing. Life in the womb and we start feeling our mother's emotions, we start picking up on energies outside of us. That's why we can, um, you know. Have some, it's when our emotional body starts to be created even at an earlier age in the womb. So there's some womb work that can be also looked at here, I think, but this eight of. Ones is like, um, it's almost like, well, if you want to have a dog, go house it. And I feel like there's an opportunity for you to go help others with their children and be, be a mom to others in a way. But um, to help moms and. Uh, I like that for you because then it's like, you're like, wow, you get a lot of information, you get a lot of knowledge, maybe you already do that. Um, you can even, uh, it allows some, you know, maybe some new moms, friends of yours or whatever. They need a break and they could, they would really love to go take a nap, you know? And then you're just like, even if it's during the day, they're like, you want me to come over for like, it's like three hours, I'll watch your baby and then go take a nap or you can go have a spa. Or you can go, go, go get a coffee and read a book somewhere, let me just give you a little break. You know, they start crying, but I feel like that uh, is what's coming in there right now. For you, faith in love. So many blessings. Uh, for you there, alright. So, um, that is it, so we'll start the free readings now, let me just move some of these over here, let's see. Let me do it this way. Have a few, so uh, hang in there, like I said, these will go a bit quicker, let me just. Get some of these queued up here, let me take a sip of my peppermint tea and we'll dive in. Alright, so up first, we have infinity, hello, hello. So energy around your university application, alright. What does spirit want you to know here? Right, well, we got here, you got the knight of swords, movement towards education. And you have the two of ones. Yeah, two candles, two of ones, it's actually filling out, it's a card, but filling out an application. So, you know, it's funny cuz you're asking about the energy around the application and the two of candles is. What energy are you putting towards your application? They're like, it depends on the moment, right? Um, but what I love is that they're telling you that you, your energy. Towards this application is what's important. Because if you are focusing on higher vibration around it. It speeds things up, you get quick answers, you, you get what matches that vibration, so gratitude. Going creator, you know? I would love to go to this university and I'm up, doing this application. So if this is for my highest experience. You know? I, I'm so grateful that you'll, uh, you know, allow me to, to go there. And they're like, alright, gotcha, you know? If I'm like, oh god, what if I don't get accepted, what if there's something wrong, what if they, what if, what if, what if, fear, 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 fear. Or telling the universe, you know what, I would like what, I'd really like to get rejected by this and I'd really like, or delays to happen. Or I'd really like to stress about this more. Our energy is what controls it, right? And so, and, and that's the thing, you know? If I, it's like let go of the attachment to that I have to go to that university. What if there's a better university, what if there's a bigger experience that the creator wants for you? You want that, don't you? Yeah, so go, you know what, if this is the best for my path, this is where I'd like to go, and they're like. Well, no, I want you to go to Harvard and here's gonna be this, um, you know, uh. What do they call it, a grant or, what do they call it when they pay for it, you know, I can't think right now of that. But you know, it's like, yeah, and you're gonna have a full, a full ride where they're gonna pay for it all, wouldn't you rather go do that and you're like? Hell yeah, you know, so it's like. Give it to the creator and go, okay, I'm doing this and, and thank you, if this is for me. And then that takes the pressure off, right, it takes the fear away going. What is meant for me will never pass me by and if a door closes, then it's closing for me because there's something better. It's never like, no, you don't deserve that, slam, it's, no, there's something better, right? So that's the kind of energy that's coming in for that infinity, so many blessings to you. And then Patricia, you're up, so message for the week, let's take a look here, so message for the week for Patricia. Alright. Look at all this sun energy, you got a sun up in the corner here and you got this leo energy of the strength card. And you've got this six of one, six of candles, energy of victory. Of um, recognition and movement of energy. I like it for you and, and it's not necessarily that you're gonna get recognized by the outside world. As much as I feel like this is, you have a great. Uh, whole, um, mob of support, a whole posse of support that love you so much. And support you so much, are so proud of you, they, they know your strength, your inner strength and. Uh, and you are so much more stronger than you've ever been taught to believe. But the sun energy that's coming in here that just. Kinda floods out of here is, I feel like there's gonna be some light shown on things next week for you. And it's gonna show you. This inner, these children are standing out and leo energy has the inner child in there about, it's like a dream. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm just seeing the world through these. Like I'm, I'm, I'm just seeing the world through these eyes of a little child, a world of possibility of what do I want? And just this, just feels like the the clouds part and the sun comes out and it's like a breath of fresh air. And I just feel like there's a lot of relief that happens. And it allows you just to see, it's like the fog gets burnt away by the sun. So you have clarity towards your path on where you wanna go and what you're wanting to do with whatever you're seeking. Advice or direction on. So I like this. You're not alone. You're very supported. And doesn't matter what humans think. It's because they don't see the full picture. They're seeing the world through their own eyes, which is tainted and they don't see you clearly, they don't see situations clearly. And you're like, that's not my problem, you know, I know I'm loved and supported and what do I want to do next? All right. So hopefully that helps. That's what's coming in for you, Patricia. So many blessings to you. All right. Let me make sure I'm going down here correctly. Yeah. And then Nibi Sarabaya, you are up. Hello, hello. So what is coming next in your life? Let's see here, what does spirit want you to know? All right, wow, I just put that back in and came flying back out. So you got the six of candles. The nine of swords is the nightmare and insomnia card, but it's a, a card of releasing fears. And I feel like something's been holding you back, some sort of limiting thought and belief and mindset. And some anxiety around something. And I just feel like you're, what's coming next is this freedom from it, this release from it. Cause you have the six of ones, which is movement and victory. It means you overcome it. And you, you know, you're able to move forward from it. So a lot of clarity, something has been coming up over and over and over and over. It's like, oh my God, you know, it's like, I don't know what. First I heard a doorbell, like it's, the doorbell keeps ringing on its own. Eventually you're like, all right, fine, let's fix the doorbell. Cause it's really starting to annoy me. It's in my ears all the time. Or if you ever have like, uh, you know, a fire alarm and the batteries are wearing out and it's beep. Every once in a while, you know, beep, oh, that's right, I gotta get a battery. But then it becomes every 15 minutes beep. Beep, you know, oh my God, I gotta change that battery, right? And I feel like that's what's happening is trigger, something's been going enough where it's like, all right. I've got it. What is this? I got, I just gotta transform this because I'm done. And you do. And it's, it's movement through it. So I feel like that's what's coming next for you. Something that's been holding you back allows you to face it and allows you to move forward like a sleigh, like it gets to, you know, it's fast on on the snow. It's not, you know, stretching through snow that's up to your knees. It's going on a sled and you're flying by. So it allows things to move in your life. So that's what they have for you, Nibi. So many blessings to you. Then Victoria Huber Ramirez, you are up. So what is coming towards you in the near future? All right. What's coming towards Victoria in the near future? All right. We've got some movement happening here. So you have the nine of candles, nine of ones, which represents like a barrier that was there, something's been holding you back too. And the the knight of canes, the knight of swords is movement of clarity, movement of communication. It's, there's something that's been just like, again, it feels like it's been held up, but with this night, night is a card of action and movement. And the night of the mind is when the faster moving ones, it's not the slow night of pentacles. So it does speed things up. It brings communication that comes in here. So if you've been waiting on hearing from someone like to contact you or like a, a job to contact you, something like that, you're about to get this communication and it feels like it feels like a finally, but it's perfect timing because the waiting and the slowness of it all has been on purpose for you to learn and to grow through some things. And now with this growth, you're ready for this, this change to come in. Starts with communication, changing of mindset a little bit. But there's this movement that comes in. It's like the floodgates are open. And again, kind of like we just had, uh, this whoosh, kind of here we go, kind of energy is coming in too. So I like that for you. Hopefully that makes sense, but that's what is coming in uh, next for your near future here. So many, many blessings to you. All right. And then we have Mina Hill, you are up. So what will be your future spouse's profession? All right. So let's take a look here. What will be their profession? They have a ten of cups here, which is all about joy and helping people get to this level of of emotional fullness and fulfillment. So they're either gonna be a drug dealer or like a counselor. No, I'm just kidding. But really counseling, I feel is what really came through, not drug dealer. But they're gonna have this like, you know, uh, ability to help people feel good and transform their emotions. That's why I feel like they are like a counselor, psychologist type of individual. Could even be medical, a medical professional of some sort that helps with, I heard like hormonal balancing. So it could be a psychiatrist. Cause they do medical too, um, where they can help and understand what's happening and help balance chemicals in people's bodies and brains and different things too. But I feel like it's that kind of individual, that type of profession where they help people feel good. Just emotionally. So I like that. Yay, Mina Hill, get some free drugs. I'm just kidding. So many blessings to you, my dear. Then MMC like a general for the next 24 hours. Let's see, what's gonna unfold for you in the next 24 hours? What does spirit want you to know? All right. So you do have the four of cups, emotional stability and the king of gifts, king of pentacles, fullness and abundant kind of energy. It just feels very full. You have the hear, hear a font here too. Which is about your higher self, allowing you to see things from a different perspective. But I just feel like, like there's a little bit of an aha. Cause that's again, this awareness that spirit gives you of seeing a situation from a different perspective, a different angle. Which you can, you can see that when you kind of, um, I feel like you like taking a lot of deep breaths helps you balance your emotions where you could hear, otherwise fear noise is too loud. So it's taking deep breaths. Slowly allows you to clear all this adrenaline and all this stuff allows you to calm down. And then you can hear spirit, you can see things from a different perspective. Then you get the full picture of something and it feels more full, life feels more full because you're not in that place of of seeing this perspective from fear. If that resonates, it just feels like there's this calm that comes and then this aha, and then you're, because your perspective changes, you see the world differently and it transforms in front of your eyes to something more full. So hopefully that makes sense to you. That's what's coming in for you MMC. So many blessings to you. And then Day Sturgis, you want whatever comes out. All right. Let's take a look here. What does spirit want you to know here? I got the ten of cups and the queen of pentacles. So joy, joy, joy and abundance, abundance, abundance overflowing. And I, I feel like there's this message that comes in here about, it's all about perspective, day. And when I choose joy, I see joy everywhere. When I see, when I choose abundance, I see abundance everywhere. When I choose lack, I see lack everywhere. When I choose unjoy, I see unjoy everywhere. And there's this energy of becoming expert in finding gratitude in situations where no one can find gratitude, but you can. And it's like you can choose that or you can choose to become an expert in finding, you know, which you're not nowhere near this, uh, but finding something to complain about or find lack in any situation. We, we become experts on that when we're younger, but this is about, look how far you've come. And look what you can do and what this can do for your life. And I feel like that's what they're just wanting you to know. A little bit of kudos about, look how far you've come as a human. But look at what this does for you and what it can do even more for you. When you choose joy and you choose seeing abundance more and more and more gratitude, 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 right? Higher vibration, higher vibration, higher vibration. So I like it. That's what they have for you, Day Sturgis. So many blessings to you. All right. And Mr. Fireworks, you are up next. Let me just bring some more of these over here. Thank you guys again for your patience and getting to your readings here. I know these can sometimes feel like they take forever to get to you. I know. But I am so grateful that spirit wants to communicate with us, right? Let's move some of these up here. These over here. Sorry, just doing some. Oops, I think I did that wrong. Oh, I did that right. Just look at some timestamps here. Okay. Okay, I got it together. I got it together. All right. So Mr. Fireworks, you'd like a general reading. All right, let's see what's going on here. What does spirit want you to know right now? All right, there it is. Okay. Wow, you got the, you got the two of the joy cards here. You got the four of wands, right? Four of ones. Yep, four of candles is four of ones. And then the three of cups, the three of good cheer is also about joy, joy, joy and celebration. Choose joy, choose joy, you know? Where whatever happens whenever is going in on our lives. We of course are given a lot of stories growing up around what things are supposed to mean and should mean and need to be and have to be and must mean, you know, opinion. Popular opinion about you know, like when I lose my job, it's supposed to be devastating, but does it? Choose joy, you know what? Thank you. You know, we can be in a place of life is happening to us, which is a place of lower vibration, fear, victimhood. We come down here, there's nothing, there's no wrong choice. Cause we come down here to experience all these fear rides. That's why we come down here to this giant fear amusement park. But when we're done, I've rode that roller coaster 100 times and thrown up 99. I think I'm done with that roller coaster. I'm choosing differently. There's a joyful ride over here, right? Um, or I'm gonna go sit and have ice cream in the zen park in the middle of the amusement park. I get to choose and this choose joy is coming through in here, right? Whenever I start my sessions, we start off taking a big deep breath and as we pause for a moment with a what am I grateful for, right? And gratitude is an immediate starts raising our love vibration immediately. It starts changing our energy. Gratitude is a fear killer, a fear transformer. Laughter is a fear transformer. Joy, you know? Comedies, jokes, laughter, 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 smiling. All this energy, this higher vibrational energy, it starts drawing in things that match it. And I, I feel like they're saying, you know, when, when in doubt, choose joy. And even if it's not the right thing to choose because we've been told, oh, you're never supposed to laugh at a funeral. You're never supposed to laugh at this or that or whatever, duh, 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 like, well, that's your choice. But I cried enough in my life and now I choose to laugh more. I feel like this is this, when's the last time you really laughed? Why are you so serious? Why so serious? Joy, joy, joy. Joy to the world, you know? And uh, and there's this energy of this. The three of cups is also that you're not alone. Um, you know, a great source of joy is spirit, the spirit world. They are beings, we are beings made of unconditional love and joy. It's a part of our nature. It's part of our energy of what we're made out of. So it's our natural state. That's why not feeling joy feels so uncomfortable and weird. Because we're not used to that. We're used to joy. And so we can ask them and they're always around us. We're never ever alone. There's a multitude of beings of unconditional love and light around you, loving you every moment. And all you have to do is ask, a lot of times, you know, we've, we've asked them to do things for us before we came down here. It's our honey do list. They've been working on that and they're always working on that. But of our own free will, we can still ask them for things and communication and clarity. And they're always giving us signs and synchronicities to remind us that they're behind us, which kind of like they're clearing their throat. Just so you know, we're back here. If you need anything, you know, they're, they're, they love communicating with us and interacting with us, but they also don't meddle in our lives. They honor our free will and our power of choice and they won't force things. But they'll remind us that they're there just in case you need to help, you know, to say, and but they're always there. Just have to ask of your own free will. So I feel like that's what they want you to know right now. So hopefully that resonates and helps a little bit there, Mr. Fireworks. So many blessings to you. Right? And then content, you wanna know what our Taurus's current thoughts about you? Who knows in that Taurus mind, probably stubborn, bullish thoughts. Let's take a look. Of course, their thoughts are all, you know, based on what's going on inside their head. Could have nothing to do with you whatsoever, right? But since you wanna know, here we go. All right. You know, we've got the seven of pentacles here and we've got this, uh, high priestess card coming in here. The high priestess card, so it's a big old full moon. There's a lot of hidden and unknown things, right? That's going on with them. And the seven of gifts, the seven of pentacles, it's like they just don't know what they want, you know? They're trying to figure out life and they're trying to figure out is what I've been trying to plant, wanna grow in life, really what I'm wanting? I don't know. But there's a lot of hidden and unknown things below the surface here to some I wouldn't say aimlessness, fogginess, lack of clarity, unsureity, I'm making up words now, but it just feels like, I don't know what the heck I want. I just don't know what the heck I want, you know? And um, and it doesn't have anything to do with you though, you know, it's not, um, it's not that, you know, you're confusing. That you're not, you know, you are a no brainer, right? If if people really knew what they wanted, they'd be like, oh my God, you're, you're wow, right? But this is like, they're just unsure. And and even this, it feels like they're trying to search underneath something and and they're on this inner search, trying to figure out what it is they want in their life. So I don't even feel like they're having like thoughts about you, but thoughts about who they are in relationship to and what they want with their life and the relationship to their life and and all that. It just feels like they're very in this upheaval of unsureity. That's, that's the sword that keeps coming through. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what I want. I'm like, well, do you wanna be with me? I don't know. Do you want me to leave? I don't know. What do you want? I don't know, you know? It's the kind of energy that's coming through. And I, that's just where they're at right now. So sorry, I have more for you content. But um, it just feels like they're in this daze and and fog and, um, But um, it just feels like they're in this daze and and fog and. You know, sometimes that tells us what we need to know though, too, right? Cause if I know I'm a no brainer decision, you know, yeah. You either love me or you hate me. So what do you feel? You know, it's, it's not a, it's not a tough question. And they're like, well, you know, well, I really like everything about you, but what if there's someone else? Oh, well, then go find him. Bye. If you're too stupid to realize what you have in front of you, then you're not the one for me. I like, uh, you know, I shared a little earlier too. There's this great book called How to Be Love, How to Be Loved. Uh, by um, Humble the Poet. And he has this, it's like, um, he talked about finding our authentic voice and our authentic selves. And some, one of the things he talked about is replacing the question of, do they like me with, do they? Align with who I am. That's an important question when we're, when we're looking at other people's thoughts and emotions, we're trying to think. Do they like me? Am I acceptable to them? It's like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. No, 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 let's reverse that. Do they align with my energy? And when we ask that questions, it does bring clarity. It's like, well, no. Cause I'm trying to align with theirs. It's weird, you know, and it's like, hmm, we don't. We don't try to align. It's like, do we align? And it's like, no, we don't. So therein lies your answer, I think. Alright, so that's what's coming in content. So many blessings to you. Hang in there. And then Teresa Horton, you are up. Can you tell me when will your daughter's boyfriend? He's a Scorpio, get a job. And will he get this job? They told him to call back in two weeks. He, oh, he wants that one? Alright, let's take a look here. So will he get that job? And if not, will he get another job? So will he get that job? Well, we have the world card is victory. It's um, you know, ending of an old cycle, beginning new adventure, but it's a victory card. So I do feel like they get that, um. That they get that job and even with the queen of pentacles coming out here. Um, definitely both of these cards together are yes, he gets a job. But since I specifically asked if he's gonna get the job. Um, that he's wanting, I feel like that's a yes, um, with that world card there. So boom, 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 easy breezy, short and easy answer on that one, Teresa. So yay. Alright, so many blessings to you. And then Vidi Jalan, you are up. So. Uh, all your wa- the, uh, you have these tapestries. You like these tapestries? I, I love them too. Thank you. We have great taste, don't we? Anyone to know what should be the focus for this year for you and don't, um. If you haven't checked out your twenty twenty-five energy forecast, I have them by each individual zodiac sign. They're, um. They're on the, the top of my main page when you go, when you go there. So let's take a look here. What does spirit, what kind of focus can you have? You know, since we're asking, there's no shoulds. From spirits, you know, point of view, they're like, it's an adventure. What do you wanna do next? I don't know. What, where should I go? Where do you wanna go? I don't know. Where should I go? Where do you wanna go? Alright. So for my highest experience, what's something? Uh, that I could focus on this year. That's the energy, right? So that's what we're looking at here. Try that again. What could you focus on this year? Alright. Well, it's very clear here. You got the knight of cups, the ace of cups, self-love. It's all a quest for self-love. Follow your heart though. Where does your heart want to take you? So a focus for this year, you know, with this energy can be. Um, raising your love vibration, raising your self-love, your self-confidence, your self-worth. Seeing clearly who you are and and the powerful love that you have within you. You fill up with that. It overflows. The rest of it is, where does your heart wanna take you? This is an adventure. What's next? Where does your heart lead? We don't have to figure out our entire year, our entire lives. It's where is our heart leading us right now? And with these cards, it's like. Yeah, if you, if you wanna go on an adventure and enjoy this beautiful life. It is a quest for finding love and we, of course, are told, look out here. And we do. We eventually. Don't find what we're looking for out there, cause relationships with people and humans. And with situations, jobs, education, all that and. Things, our bodies, our bank accounts, they leave us empty. We don't feel that. We come back, right? We find in here, there's all of I've been looking for all along inward and upward. There it is. And then we fill up with life and then where does life lead us? What's next? What's the next adventure? We don't, we're not on a quest to find it out there. You know, we're on a, a quest to find how we wanna express love into the world and where it's next, right? And I feel like that's a good focus for this year because it's like, yeah. It's not about finding my fulfillment out there. It's finding my fulfillment in here. And then going on adventures out there, exploring, not on a search for, I gotta obtain its. Expression instead of obsession. I like that, so. So that hopefully that helps Vidi a little, a little, uh. A little bit of a, a clarity, I guess. So that's what they have for you. So many blessings to you. And then Me New, you are up next. Let me just move some more of these over here. Whoa, simmer down. Alright, so Me New, you wanna know when will you meet your future spouse? In ten, nine, eight. Oh, no, I'm not ready. Uh, just, just jokes, just jokes. So when will you meet them? Alright, we got the nine of good cheer, which is the nine of cups. And then the justice card here too. So the when. Is more a range for you and, um. I feel like this is like the nine and the eleven, so September to November. Um, is an opportunity for you, um, to meet your future spouse. The nine of cups talks about finding, cause that's the hermit number, finding your love inside of you. Cause you can't give more love to others than you have for yourself, nor receive love from others more than you have for yourself. So while you're waiting for this to happen, you can be raising your self-love, raising your love vibration. That does tend to bring things in earlier. The justice card is also. Uh, balancing out your thoughts and beliefs that you have around. What, uh, a spouse is supposed to be, what a relationship is supposed to be, marriage, right? Where they're supposed to be me, blah, blah, blah. There's so much pressure, so many rules, so much. That when we have a lot of expectations around marriage and relationships or anything. We spend all our time focusing on how something, what something is not being, instead of celebrating. Having gratitude for it, for what something is. Finding our self-love cures so much of that because it erases a lot of our expectations because. A lot of our expectations are that the outside world is supposed to make me feel good, make me feel loved. They can't, they can't give you what you're looking for. That's your self-love. Once you fill up with that, everything is above and beyond extra that they give you. You celebrate it. And that, what kind of a relationship is that, right? Where you, all you're doing is. Talking about how grateful you are about who they are and what they're doing and everything, instead of. You didn't do that, you didn't do this and judging yourself about, I'm not failing this, I'm not doing that. The relationship isn't being what it needs to be. We're focusing all that lower energy we just bring in and. Expand that energy, but gratitude and that inner love is what expands and brings that in. So doing all those things will help your marriage, but also brings it in. The more you raise your love vibration. The faster things come to you. Right now, it feels September to November. Is when you'll meet them, uh, not necessarily if you, you won't get married in, in September to November this year. But I feel like you'll meet them through there. How fast it moves forward has to do with that, right? Alright, so that's what they have for you, Me New. So many blessings to you. And then Amazing Grace, you're up next. Hello, hello. So you said, put you down for a reading. I didn't see. I didn't see, doesn't mean it wasn't there, but I didn't see a question. So we'll do a general reading. Spirit knows what you're wanting. So let's take a look. Alright, so you have the page of gifts, the page of pentacles and then the seven of cups too. And. Feel a very joyful energy with this combination. It just feels like. You've been on this very, say, internal, interesting journey. Of recognizing and seeing your self-worth in a relationship to the outside world in a different way. So you've really been building on this, your self-esteem, your self-confidence, your self-love. And because of that, it's created this opportunity for you. To not judge emotion as kind of right or wrong. I feel like you're. You've really learned to sit with emotion and flow through emotion, not push down emotion. And 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 I mean, literally, it's like you're sitting with emotion, journaling here. And but you're, it's allowing you to experience and flow through a lot of different emotions. But it's also giving you kind of this empowerment to be able to. Choose what I wanna feel because you realize as you're flowing through emotion. That most emotions cycles through in ninety seconds. So if we don't get attached to a fear and keep looping in emotion. We can feel, you know, how many emotions every ninety seconds. You know, several different emotions, you know, in an hour, right? And it's like, well, I can feel all these, but I can also choose what I wanna feel. And I can loop a feeling I wanna feel. I'm gonna choose joy and I'm gonna choose joy again. I'm gonna choose joy again. I'm gonna choose unconditional love. And choose laughter. I'm gonna choose higher vibration. Doesn't mean lower vibrations wrong, you know, like I said. We, we've rolled and rolled around like a hog in mud our entire lives and lower vibrational emotion. But at some point we realize I get to choose what I wanna feel. And I feel like you've just been really growing that and I feel like you've have. Some great journaling that you've been doing and continue to do that. I just feel like you're being encouraged to. Continue journaling or returning to it or rereading it and just see how far you've come. One, and then to see the empowerment. And to see how emotional choices like going to a convenience store and. Choosing what drink you want out of the, I want this. It's, that's the seven of cups. I get to choose this cup. This is the emotion I wanna drink out of right now. And I love that for you. Very empowering, very kudos kind of energy too. So. That's what they have for you right now. Amazing grace, so many blessings to you. So hang in everybody, we're getting there, we're getting there. Let's see, we've got one. Uh, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, eight more to go. So hang in there. We're coming around the bend. Alright, and then, uh, KVH, you are up. Hey, happy new year to you too. Um, any like a general reading for January? Alright, let's take a look here. What? Oh, what does spirit want you to know for January? Sure, check out your twenty twenty-five energy forecast, also your solstice by element. Uh, that'll give you some energy for the entire year and for the three month period from December twentieth. To March twentieth. Those are all on my main page, the playlists. Alright, January. Evidently, they wanted you to have these three. Okay. Well, January does bring you clarity. New starts here with this ace of swords. You also have the. Full card, the child, which is the first card in the major kind of zero. New beginnings, new adventures. Well, happy new year. We know it's all starting here. And you have the knight of gifts. The knight of pentacles, the quest for self-worth of worthiness. Finding your worth in relationship to the outside world in a different world. But it's all about the quest. I just feel like there's. Something that you're pursuing and and I just feel like there's. The full card is a major arcana, so it's a significant new beginning and ending of an old cycle. You've completed something, you're ready to go into the next level, you're ready to proceed forward. Knight of pentacles is, there's no rush. Enjoy the journey, enjoy the adventure. But the ace of swords is about clarity of mind and thought and belief. Or even if you're thinking about learning something new, returning to school. Studying something, it's very well supported with this energy too. But it is a time of, of new beginnings for you and, um. But I don't feel like it's like a, a tower lightning moment where it's like sudden, I feel like it's like. You're kind of mulling over some change this month and you're starting to make the change, starting the. Clearing away of the. Fears or the thoughts that would have been holding you back before. So I like that. So a little bit of a tidbit, but yeah, be sure to check out those other two videos, cause you'll get a lot more clarity around things too. Uh, we go into some detail, um. In, uh, in both of them, but the twenty twenty-five energy forecasts, you go into. The entire year, but we break down different areas of the life and different things too. So be sure to check those, okay? Alright, that's what they have for you, KVH. So many blessings to you. And then Maria P, you are up. Thank you for your donations earlier and this weekend. Appreciate you. And you wanna know what would Walter like to do in our next date? Hang up. Uh-oh, it's not that kind of channel. Alright, let's see here. Alright. We have the ace of swords, something new. They definitely would like to try. Yeah, something new, new idea. This is what the ace of swords is. Let's do something different, something new. Wheel of Fortune. The wheel of the year, you know, I was thinking casino. I don't know if you live near casinos, but it just feels like there's something. Uh, you know, what's, what's in my head is. And this could be something fun to do, right? But it's making a wheel. You know how like they have the wheels that you go. And they end up being some, kind of like Wheel of Fortune, the, you know, the TV game show. But it's like this, right? And, and you, you make a little sheet with a pie and there's. Different things that are on there. And I feel like that would make it fun. It's like, alright. So here's things and you get to decide. Like, hey, we're gonna, and whatever it ends is what we, what we go do, you know? And I feel like that's fun, but I feel like you guys come up with, you know. New things that you'd like to go do and go see or go try or or whatever like that. That could work for other things too, I know. Get your mind out of the gutter or at least, you know. Get out, you know, move over and get, get out of the way, uh, make room for me, right? We're all in the gutter now, but there's, you know, you can, uh, try things. And I feel like that's what they're wanting to do is. Let's try something different, you know, and, uh, make it an adventure. So. I feel like that's what's coming in right now, Maria. So there you go. Many blessings to you. And then Rain Sweet Drop, you are up. So good afternoon. So it's been a while. Yeah, I know, right? I'm doing, uh, better. I was sick for a while. I got some sinus fun stuff for Christmas. Happy new year. And, um. You asked if I was still accepting questions. Um, and I didn't see it until after I left, which is, I'm always, on Sundays, I'm always accepting new questions, cause I come back on. So we'll give you a general reading since I didn't get to see where your, what your question was unless I totally overlooked it. Uh, which is not out of the possibilities. But let's see here what spirit wants you for. This one too. Alright, so you got the king of candles, which is the king of wands and the standard tarot and the, uh, child, which is the full card. This is about starting something new. Uh, having the energy, busting forward, completing it. Uh, taking action or or deciding and creating a plan and taking action toward it. Don't let anything stop you, you know, it's the full card, the child card is, it's a world of possibilities. You know, put all the limit, limiting thoughts and beliefs and mindsets aside. You know, put all the limit, limiting thoughts and beliefs and mindsets aside and just go, what do I want? If there were nothing holding me back, what do I want? And go for it. And start making plans, start taking actions, start researching, doing whatever it is. I'm gonna move toward this and nothing's gonna stop me, cause where there's a will, there's a way. And I feel like when you put your mind to something, clear the path, cause here you go and you can make it happen. And you have that ability to do so. So, don't be afraid to start this new thing, to end an old cycle, to begin a new adventure. Uh, you have the ability and the capacity to do so, and you have the power. It's just, you have to do it. You have to ignite it. You have to, has to be your energy. So hopefully that helps with what question you had. So, good to see you. Hang in there. Take care of yourself and, uh, many blessings. And then up next, Livia Bagara. Hello, hello. A general message for this starting new year. Yes, and happy new year. Thanks for all your well wishes. I remember seeing a bunch. Alright, let's take a look here. And of course, check out your twenty twenty-five energy forecast. And even the solstice readings, cause that's good until March twentieth. That'll give you some insight into this year for you too. Those are all on my main page. If you click on the bread is on mystic tarot. So for starting this new year, you have the eight, yeah. So you've got the eight of gifts, the eight of pentacles. This is about putting in the blood, the sweat, the tears, the learning, the growth, the transformation. The fruit coming from the labor that you're putting in. And speaking of labor, uh-oh, if you don't wanna get pregnant, look out. I'm just kidding. Empress energy here. Birthing harvest. So, this is a year of if you will put in the effort and the work consistently, you're gonna have abundance, you're gonna have fullness, and whatever you put your energy into. Um, if you're, if you were interested in going back to school or learning something new, very well supported in here too, you would do very well with it. Uh, be true to you. Creativity, uh, is also flowing through with all this too. But birthing, creating, your energy is what brings it forth, right? The empress, she's the one that births, you're the one that births things into your life. So be aware of what you're wanting to put your energy toward and do it, right? So that's what they have for you. Nice little tidbit, but check out those other videos. They, they do dive in, uh, more deeply. Based on, um, zodiac sign and, um, the solstices by, um, element. So air elements, water, water signs, air signs, fire signs, et cetera. Alright, so that's what they have, my dear. Many blessings to you. And then Latoya Bryant, hello, hello. Uh, what is Alton the Libra current feeling towards you? The Libra. Rulers of the partnership house. What, what, oh, what are they thinking? Probably some sort of balanced thought. Let's see what they're feeling towards you though. Yeah, so there is a lot of emotion below the surface here with the high priestess card. You know, she, there's a lot flowing below that, the unseen and the unknown. And it, it is there. The five of canes, the five of swords, is this internal battle between their head and their heart. And it's not that they're oblivious to their emotions that are going on below the surface, right? But, you know, Libras, we're, you know, air signs do get into their head a lot. To make sense why they're conflicted up here about their emotions down here. Not conflicted about what they feel, but that their mind doesn't let their heart act on their emotions. It's like, uh, you know, I often joke about the, the brain having the heart on one of those little children harnesses. No, 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 you can't go over there. And the heart's like, no, no, I wanna, like, nope, nope, you can't go over there. You know what happens when I let you loose? All sorts of mayhem. So we're keeping you under control. And so they have their heart very much under, under control. There's a lot of emotion flowing there below the surface with that high priestess and the moon, the full moon in the sky. So it's a lot of emotional flow. They feel deeply. Um, obviously with Libra ruling over the house of partnerships, but they're just, they've had too much pain, too much. Like I said, mayhem, that's happened because when they let their heart just flow forward. So it's very bridled, it's very literally bridled, like a horse. Going, nope, nope, we're not gonna go over there. At least right now. They're very slow on opening up, very slow on. It's like trust needs to be built, cause they've just, um, have had big pain. And that's why, uh, their brain has decided, I need to be in charge. So hopefully that helps understand where they're coming from, and they do have a lot of feeling there, a lot of emotion. Um, a lot of fear that holds it back too. So, yay. That's what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. And then Carmel de Amont, twenty-four, hello, hello. You wanna know, uh, why is KB thinking of you and when will he romantically reach out to you? So let's take a look here. Yeah, so I think maybe you're asking, what is he thinking of you? So we'll do that. And then will he be reaching out? So what is he feeling? Well, we got the star card here. Which is both like a dream come true, wishing upon a star. Too good to be true. Can't take his eyes off of you. It's an old song. Um, but there's balanced energy that comes in with, with this, it's like Aquarius energy. And that makes sense with the energy I'm picking up from them. Cause they are thinking, Aquarius, I'm Aquarius, and so I get it, you know? Emotions are kept in containers. They're not just shared on our sleeve. We keep them in little Tupperware containers in a refrigerated place in our heart, so that they stay fresh. And we can give them out when we want. But sometimes we forget to give the emotion out, cause we're so caught up in thinking about how we're gonna save the world. So, and you can understand where they're coming from, but they do have this emotion for you. And they do think you are, you know, the star on top of the Christmas tree. So very great feelings there. Um, and when will he romantically reach out? Well, we got the full card here. I feel like he's coming up on a significant ending of a cycle in his life, which is gonna allow new beginnings and allow action to be taken in and to move forward. So there is this, I don't know, are they completing school or completing? There's, it's like that kind of thing where I feel like they're, alright, I've got my masters, or I'm completing, got my degree. Now I'm gonna have time to invest. Now I'll move forward, cause they were like, if I get romantically involved now, my grades are gonna suffer, I'm not gonna have the time, I'm gonna be battling between trying to fit you in with homework. That's the kind of thing that I feel was there. It's like, they wanted to make sure that they were prepared with whatever this completion is. They wanted to be able to be prepared to do it right, if that makes sense. So I feel like it's coming up here, but I mean, if it's an end of a semester or getting a degree or, uh, getting the promotion or buying the house or whatever this major step is, that needs to finish first. It'll be right after that. So. Hopefully that helps, Carmel. That's what's coming in. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then we have Ca, uh, Kashi Sharma. Hello, hello. So, um, oh, so you wanna know if TH is your future spouse? Alright, let's take a look here. Based on current energies and your life path and your destiny. Let's take a look here. Are they your future spouse? Uh, no, they aren't. You've got the knight of candles, which is fast movement and, you have the five of cups, which is, you know, spilt cups and, you know, lower vibrational emotion that comes in here. Um, but the knight of candles, there is someone new that you meet and, um, I, I feel like there's just gonna be disappointment that comes up and they're just not gonna be what you perceive them to be. It's, it's like I'm getting this energy that, um, like it was, like, um, I used to do this, I, cause I used to fall, I could really see the possibilities of, of who someone could be. But they didn't quite achieve that. And when you fall in love with that and not who they are now, um, and, and they're not capable of it, you know, that, and they ended up cheating on me, you know? So you're like, oh, you're not that. You could be that, but you chose not to be that, or you're not that yet, and that caused that. So, and I feel like, not that they'll cheat on you, but I just feel like that, you know? It's like, yeah, they're not living up to the, the menu. Said best thing ever, and this was not the best thing ever. Uh, so I don't feel it, but I feel like there is someone else that does come quickly. In place of, that's more in alignment with your energy and aligns with who you are. So. So that's what's coming in, Kashi. So many blessings to you. Hang in there. I know you really like them, but just know it's always an upgrade. It's not a downgrade that you get, it's an upgrade. Alright, and then lastly, but not leastly, we have, uh, is that, uh, is the Y silent? It's, is that? I'm just gonna call you Ant, E-N-T on the end. So, uh, uh, cause I'm gonna murder your name and I don't wanna disrespect. So, we're just gonna leave it that, right? So, wanna know what's gonna happen or the outcome of this huge tower moment? Yay, right? That you've been going through since November. And happy Sunday. You're so funny. Yeah, I hear ya. Wow, tower, tower. That's wonderful, you know? Towers are great energies for us, are always happening for us. Making space for that, which is more in alignment, that aligns with our higher self and our path that clears the way. So I like that. So let's see the outcome here. So, wow, well, I like it for you. You know, you've got the hierophant here. Which that's, you know, your higher self, allowing you to see a lot of things in your life with huge clarity. Capital T truths, allows a lot of the small T truths that are rooted in fear to be wiped away and transformed into higher wisdom and knowledge. But also with this, um, king of gifts, which is the king of pentacles, this is abundance, this is fullness. So it does end up in the long run, right? Uh, as you, the wisdom you're gleaning in since this tower moment. If you can step back and take a big deep breath and go, okay, this is not happening to me, it is happening for me. In fact, before I came down here, I talked to my spirit guides and I'm like, at this point in my life, if I haven't removed this situation myself, then I give you permission to remove it for me, for me, right? So that, that will flee, free up my life, so I can move on to the next faded experience that I've been wanting to experience. But this would keep me from going there. So, remove this, and that's why you're gonna feel like this awareness and, and this knowledge that comes in. But you also get that, that, uh, you know, king of pentacles, you get this fullness of life. One of the big ahas I feel like you learned through all this is that the outside world can't give me what I'm looking for. And when I define my worth, my self-worth on the outside world, that's not self-worth, that's retail price, right? Self-worth comes from inward and upward. I define who I am. But when I go outside of myself, that's what I'm worth to others, that's retail. You usually end up on a clearance rack somewhere out there with retail over time, right? And when we define our self-worth by the outside world, there's three buckets that were taught. This is one of the big things the king of pentacles learns when he defined his worth by the outside world. By relationships with humans, situations like jobs, education, social status, or things, our bank accounts, our possessions, our bodies. That these are all unstable, and when I define myself by these unstable things, well, what do you know? I feel unstable. People change, people walk away, people pass away, right? So relationships are unstable, situations never stay the same. Unstable things break down, deteriorate, blow up, burn down, stolen, right? So eventually I become bored and disappointed enough in the instability of the outside world that I turn inward and upward. And that's where you find the eternal, unconditional love of the higher realms, the creator, spirit, our higher self. We find our capital S self-love. Define ourselves by that. That's the only stable thing in this whole universe. Is the eternal, unconditional. Eternal lasts forever, right? That's pretty solid. Uh, unconditional, no conditions, nothing you can do to lose it. That's pretty solid too. So when you do that, it transforms everything. You have this solid feel of life. Do you realize these tower moments happen for me? Cause when it removes things from this outside world, then it allows me to turn inward. Everything points us inward. All these tower moments point us inward. So ends up freeing you and then you feel full, real abundance. Instead of false abundance, unstable, temporary abundance that happens in the outside world. So that is what ends up happening here. You end up with these big ahas and this solid feel as you turn inward and upwards. So I love that free. Alright, so hopefully that helps. Many blessings. And thank you guys so much for your patience in getting to all your readings. When I'm done here, I will post. A note listing the order in which all the readings were completed, so you can find your reading more, more quickly. I'll be back Friday for more readings, six PM out in time. If you're interested in diving deeper with me, I also have memberships. Zen Cricket is two ninety-nine a month, Praying Mantis is seven ninety-nine a month. Zen Cricket and Praying Mantis, we, uh, meet together on Wednesday evenings for a couple hours for free readings and Q and A and whatever we wanna do, oracle readings, past life readings. Uh, Praying Mantis, the higher level membership, they get a, their own special night on Thursday nights, plus on Friday, Saturday nights after my sessions. And Sunday afternoon after my sessions, uh, we also have another hour or so. And they get advanced access to all of my videos early. But we dive deeper and we ask questions and, uh, it's more intimate setting too. So if you want that information is linked down in the description box, or if you want a more in-depth reading, I offer personal readings, and there's another link in the, uh, bottom, uh, in the description box of the video for you to be able to uh, link over there and see all the different types of readings I offer. I do recorded and virtual. What else? I think that's everything. So, welcome, happy new year. I'm so glad I'm back. So glad to be with you all and thank you for all the love and support. And remember, every second of every day of your life, as you're going through this amazing adventure, that you are eternally and unconditionally loved by the cosmic father, the cosmic mother, our creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love. Hang in there, take care of yourself. We'll see you soon.